Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll. Oh, your mic's not on?
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah.
Oh, here we go. Mr. Rollins?
Guess what? It was my kill button was on. It's my fault. I didn't turn it on.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirrano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
President.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Training for the president.
Okay.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With Southern present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to thank our gentleman in the back here, Rod Woodell and Connor Childers, who are working behind the scenes to produce the board's broadcast of our meeting on Comcast Channel 20 tonight. So, thank you, gentlemen. We are now going to recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students, and Ms. Kathy Bayer is going to handle that for us.
Good evening.
Hi.
The Rockford Competitive Marching Band had an excellent season this year with 34 students in this year's band, and we're fortunate some of them are here with us tonight. Students in the band come from all four of our high schools, and it also includes eighth graders looking to take their musical talent to the next level. The group traveled to area competitions and represented Rockford Public Schools. This year, the marching band participated in four competitions, taking fourth place at Limestone High School and participating in the Illinois State University Marching Band Championship and Chicago's Columbus Day Parade. The group is led by Lincoln Middle School Band Director Steve Micalay, High School Band Director at East Susan Funk, and Guilford High School Band Director Weston Brabeck. Braybeck, excuse me. Congratulations to these students and staff on a great season. Would you all please stand and be recognized?
Yeah.
The board's directing you to come up and shake hands, please.
There you go.
Come on up. Congratulations.
All right. All right. Congratulations. Great job.
Great job.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
You didn't bring your instruments? Oh, no. All right, good job. Very proud of you. Way to go. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Well done. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to our music teachers that are here, too.
I was going to add, can we please have a round of applause to these students, teachers, parents, and family members for supporting them this season? Thank you. That's all.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming. We will now move on to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting. We invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we're following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We only have one speaker, so I'm going to jump ahead. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such meetings. Please come to the front. We have a clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. And we thank you for your interest and cooperation with our guidelines. So, our one speaker tonight is Amy Akey. Is she here? Okay, come on to the front. Look at the mic.
Good evening.
Hi.
Not sure how much I'm able to actually discuss because I think there's some private matters, and I know there's things I can't discuss. But I have tried reaching out to the superintendent's office, following the proper chains of command all the way up, and I've not gotten anywhere. I am a mom of five. Three of my kids go to 205. Two of my children have special needs and have IEPs. And it's a concern to transportation. But overall, there's concerns with one of the administrative people in the Special Education Department telling me that that person contacted Transportation to try to help me with some matters and bull-faced lied to me in a group full of people. And when I contacted that Transportation person individually, that communication never occurred. So, when I brought that concern up the chain of command, I have not been able to have that addressed at all. I've been told to go back to my level's Special Education Administrator, which is outside of his expertise since he's supposed to be working with my child in the IEP process. This is above in his superior's level, if you can imagine. It was not appropriate. I feel that they're putting him in that position. And all I want to do is be heard so that I, you know, just so someone can hear me out and listen to my concerns. And I don't think it's appropriate this time, but I was asked to come here since it's the only opportunity I've had a chance to speak to anybody that can hear even a little bit of my concerns. So, I look forward to talking to somebody in depth about this, please, when it's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No other speakers, so I'll ask for board member comments at this time? None? Okay. We'll move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items. The meeting minutes from November 13, 2018. Payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request log, and travel. The bid recommendations for the demolition of Cherry Valley, Thompson, and White Swan school buildings. The asbestos abatement of Cherry Valley, Thompson, and White Swan school buildings. The recurring contracts of R.L. Johnson Associates for the amendment for demolition of King. The Karna O'Connor Bear and Associates Amendment for the abatement design for King. The Maxim Healthcare Agency 101 Nursing Contract. The Apple Inc. Education and Schools iPad Lease. The U.S. Bank Chromebook Lease. And the Stop Loss Health Insurance. And the other consent items, including the New School Construction Change Order Log, the RPS Managed Work Change Order Logs, the monthly investment report for October of 2018, the financial results through October of 2018, Workman, excuse me, Workman Comp Settlement Agreement for DG and Workman Comp Settlement Agreement for FH, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion in a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Connor?
The following: 7C, 8B, 9B, 9D, 9E, and 10B.
Okay. Any others? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll now take a motion in a second to approve item 7C, which is accounts payable.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, I have a number of items that I pulled. I tried to be quick on all of them. I had sent out questions to the administration and got, actually, good answers. The reason for 7C, I had a discussion with Mrs. Yahoo, who's not here tonight, about some of the details on some of the large checks. And essentially, I won't go into all the details, but what I'll say is I've asked her that, because some of these, you know, there's a PO number, but it's just like some title. And some of them are a little obtuse. So, I've asked for some clarification on what they're for because some of them are, you know, several hundred thousand dollars and more. So, that's the reason I pulled it, just to tell everyone that that's a discussion that we've had. And I think that it'll be better going forward.
Okay, any other comments? All right, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of 7C, accounts payable.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and I'll take a motion in a second for item 8B, which is the asbestos abatement for Cherry Valley, Thompson, and White Swan school buildings.
And actually, did I do both A and B?
You just said B.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. All right. So moved for 8B.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Questions or discussion?
Yeah, my fault. I hope everybody, because they're kind of related. I asked a question why there was a big difference. If you saw the winning bids for White Swan, Cherry Valley, and Thompson, there was quite a range of like almost a million dollars on some of this. And so, I asked the, I asked for a comment on it. And basically, Mr. Phillips and actually Mrs. Holley did answer, and I appreciated it. And part of it was that the timeframes were different, but they basically said that it was due to sort of different assumptions from the different vendors because you wonder about the quality side. And essentially, I got an answer back that said that this was to be expected, that there would be a range that could be quite large because of the assumptions and that they do go through on quality. And so, I was good with the answer, but I just, I wanted to let everybody know that if you did look at it and notice that disparity, that was not unexpected, is what I would say. And specifically, and I think it was 8B, talking about the design and all, that the one winner there, Colonel Conner Bear, is someone who will do the design of this. And they would also oversee Husar's winning bid. And so, I just wanted to let people know that I asked about that and was very satisfied with the answers.
Any other questions? Mrs. McCulloch?
I'm confused. So, we're demolishing buildings, right?
Uh huh.
And so, you were concerned about the quality of the demolishing?
No. So, the question was about, so this is now 8B, right?
Right. Asbestos abatement was B, but demolition was A. And you referenced that, and then you said that the people who are doing A, the demolishing, will oversee the people who are doing the abatement?
No, no. The Colonel Conner Bear, which is 8B.
That's 9B.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one.
Okay, that's why. I'm really confused.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I was reading from the wrong.
Really listening to you, honestly.
Yeah, I know. No, my apologies. I was reading the wrong number. But 8B also, they were talking about the difference. And he was, his answer is on the, I'll just read it. I'm sorry, I was trying to summarize it. But he said the bids came in where Karna expected with the outliers on both ends of the bid spectrum. So, what I was trying to explain is that that range was to be expected on that. So, if you looked on that, on the differences, that they actually expected that, and...
So, the abatement, the asbestos abatement ranged from 288,000 to 1,008,000.
That's...
And so, we by law take the lowest responsible bidder.
That's right, but...
You were just concerned that they were responsible?
That's, well, and the disparity, so that, that's right. So, had they looked at this? And that's where Mr. Phillips basically said that, you know, that they had looked at this carefully and that they had judged that, yes, it was. And the disparity was the assumptions on, and the methods that they were doing it. So, I wasn't very clear, I guess, on that. But that's, that's all it was.
Okay. Coordinator then called a roll on the approval of item 8B, the asbestos abatement for Cherry Valley, Thompson, and White Swan.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now we're on 9B. Well, so I'll take a motion in a second for the approval of item 9B, which is the Karna O'Connor Bear and Associates Amendment.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Segal, seconds. Questions or discussion, comments?
Yeah, this was, yeah, where they were talking about...
This is about King Elementary.
Yes. And basically, the question I asked, sorry, I'm using more organized than this, and I apologize for this. I said that Conner Bear winning asbestos bid for 11 schools was 263. Why was this split between two separate bids? The 8B versus 9B? And basically, the answer was that Colonel Conner Bear is the environmental services vendor. So, they did the design and the monitoring. And then, this all followed the standard. And so, they were basically, again, saying that any disparity in the fact that the Colonel Conner Bear was the one that was overseeing the work, so...
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the 9B.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, Mr. Connor, can we do 9D and E together?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I'll take a motion to approve items 9D and 9E, which are the Apple and U.S. and Chromebook Lease.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Mr. Segal? Comments or questions?
Yeah, so on this one, hopefully, I'll do a better job of explaining. The question was that, what I asked was, how will proper usage be defined, reported, monitored to the board for the iPads and then for the Chromebooks? That was the question. And Mrs. Dedman gave a good answer. And actually, one of the things that I'll say that I liked that she said is that essentially, that on proper usage, that they'll do some technical standards now, but that going forward at a certain point, how they're being used will be a matter of how effectively they've been applied to the curriculum. And that that has not been done right now. So, by proper usage, it stats on how much time the kids are using it, what they're using it for, those kinds of things, which I would consider like technical metrics. But in case anybody was worried that proper usage wouldn't be defined past, you know, the web filtering and the reporting tools and so forth, that is a step that we will do at some future point. And I assume, and I don't know what the timeframe would be on that one, if Mrs. Dedman, if you have a sense of that.
Sure. That's connected to hiring the ed tech coordinator so that we have...
Oh, that's what it was. Right.
Yeah, so that we have that in place. And that should happen in the next few weeks. And so, in the next about six months or so, we should have a pretty good vision for that.
Yeah. So, the point was that if anybody was concerned about what proper usage meant in terms of the educational side, that that's coming. We just haven't seen that. And so, all I wanted to do is say that they actually sent me quite a bit of information. And again, did a good job, I thought, of answering the question.
Okay, Mrs. McCulloch?
Yeah, since you pulled, I'm just going to ask the question. And was there a delta in the cost? Because we had them, the leases last year as well. I see this one for Chromebooks is actually for four years, right? Four equal installments, 19, 20, 21, and 22. So, we're set on Chromebooks for four years. Is that true?
So, the...
I'm not sure what we're approving. Are we approving for this year or for four years?
You're approving a lease. It's a three-year lease.
Correct. And the amount on the lease is $849,000. But it says the payments will be made in four installments. And will we just automatically be paying that out once we vote on this as compared to having a conversation about whether or not? Because we're having, we're having some conversations about technology in this system. And there's been concerns about Chromebooks and the speed with which people can access information to participate in class. You know, teachers have said, right? Didn't they say, for example, in DLT, it's a whole lot faster for a kid to pull out his phone than to use a Chromebook? But that, now, maybe that's a practice piece. If more often they use them, the faster they'll be, I hope. And is this a cart per room at the secondary grade level? How far is this going to reach? I guess I had lots of questions. I didn't realize I had.
So, we, we had an option to either purchase the computers outright or lease them. And a couple of years ago, we decided leasing was a better option because of the, you know...
Changes.
The changes over time with technology. And so, that's what we're approving a lease. The question about the speed of the devices in a particular classroom, I don't have an answer for you tonight on that. I don't know that that's widespread or if that was one teacher's experience. What was the other question?
Well, I asked if there was a change in the annual cost compared to when we first had the contract.
So, the cost, and I don't know if anybody from IT is here, but I talked to Bill Hall. We go through a consortium with CDW to get this...
For this one? Okay.
Get the price. And we get, if you look in the summary, we get the price for about $20 less per device than what you would get on the statewide consortium. So, I think we've got a pretty good deal.
So, because we lease, because we want the most up-to-date equipment, do they come in and swap them out for us for new Chromebooks as they are improved? Or do we just have the same ones for four years?
It's the same ones. I think it's three years.
It's four on here.
There's four payments, but it's over three years. At least it's three years.
19, 20, 21, and 22. Okay.
Are you sure that, because I thought that we could get new equipment if something were to be improved on this, so that, that's part of the lease?
We're coming up at the end of our first three-year cycle now.
Right.
And so, Mr. Barthel and I have been talking about looking at evaluating the products that we have right now and what's come onto market in the last three years to look for those improvements. Then, in response to what we heard at DLT, as soon as we have this ed tech coordinator hired, we're going to send a little team out to an elementary, middle, and high school and sit with kids while they're doing their work to really take a look at what's holding back the timing. And we'll have a curriculum representative and a tech representative there, too, so that we can problem solve that. I hadn't really gotten that direct feedback with how many minutes it actually was taking students and why we were using cell phones. So, that'll be our next step there.
Will that ed tech coordinator also look at improvements or changes to the hardware to see if what we have is the most current? I mean, if we've had these for three years, and now we're going to have them four more years, that's part of the reason we're leasing is to have the most up-to-date equipment, right? And so, if we just have the same thing for seven years...
Well, they would be the most updated Chromebook, not the Chromebook from three years ago. So, that's important to know. It's the same device, but, you know, the latest model of that device. Mm-hmm. Correct.
That's, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Connor?
Actually, Mr. Rollins said it's...
Yeah, I've got two questions. One's sort of a policy, one's more technical on the policy. So, I'm sure we've had this discussion before, but just refresh me. Why are we doing both iPads and Chromebooks?
Yeah, what's appropriate for the age of the student? So, K through 2, we use iPads. 3 through 12 is Chromebook.
Okay. The technical question, I can remember talking about this when we first got into the leasing realm about, like, who's responsible if they get broken or damaged? And I thought that Apple, one of the attractions of Apple contracts, they were offering some sort of a, basically, you know, we'll replace it. Yeah, a service contractor, we'll replace it for free or whatever. And I'm just, I'm actually not seeing any language like that anywhere. In fact, in the Apple contract that's up for approval, it looks like we have to have insurance or we're self-insuring. Is that, is that correct? And the schedule for the insurance isn't filled out. So, does that mean we're self-insuring?
I don't know the answer to that question. Do you?
I can check with IT. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I don't want to hold, I should have asked these questions before. I should have looked at this earlier. But, you know, since it got pulled and I'm starting to look at it, I am kind of, it's a discussion that we had once before. You know, kids are using this stuff in the schools. It is going to get broken, so who's...
These are the same, these are the same leasing guidelines that we've used over the last few years. But certainly, we can take this back and make sure we can directly answer that question before our next meeting.
Is it going to make a difference two weeks? Or...
It makes a difference in terms of deployment for schools because we have that break over Christmas vacation as well.
I don't understand.
You mean the timing? Like, if we hold, well, it's just another two weeks for ordering and then deployment.
Dr. Wolf has something to contribute here. Okay.
According to Bill Hall, if we place the order after December 1, the tariff that are, tariffs that are set to go in on December 1 will raise the cost on the Chromebook contract by about $24,000 or so. So, that is...
Okay. Thanks for checking. Anything else, Mr. Rollins?
No, I'm just going to request that the, somebody actually look at this and make sure that we at least understand what our obligations are.
On the repair...
And whether, if we're supposed to be getting insurance, that we actually get the insurance. Because there is on the Apple contract, at least, there's a blank exhibit having to do with the insurance.
Is there a way to vote on this so that we say pending affirmation that there is a agreement for replacement? Or what? It's not good to vote on blank pages on contracts. We've had that conversation before.
I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Connor?
So, one thing that was said earlier I do want to bring up is that part of my question about proper usage was the alignment, kind of what Mr. Rollins and Mrs. McCulloch were questioning, is that the proper usage has to be lined up to the curriculum in the classroom. That's something we've talked about for quite a while. And that the new ed tech coordinator would go out. That's actually when I referred to the non-technical standards. So, right now, they're going to have usage and other things through Active Directory, meaning they know how long the kids are on, what they're using them for. But the alignment with curriculum is really another step. And we are not there today. That's the whole point of the planning part for the new ed tech director to make sure that what has been outlined in the curriculum can be implemented through software and in the classrooms. Because it's not standardized today. I mean, I think that's, one of the things I will say is, those of you that have looked at the issue of one-for-one, there's been many failures out in the education world where they were not applied. Meaning, just having a Chromebook doesn't guarantee success. You have to be aligned with the curriculum and the classroom. I mean, that's, that's the key. So, that's, that's why I questioned proper usage. And that's why when the answer came back, that that's a standard that we're going to do as we roll this out. That's what makes me comfortable is we've got the curriculum in place, I think is a pretty true statement. Now, we're looking at how to apply that in the classroom and then furthermore, what software. And that we presume that both the Chromebook and the iPads at the targeted audience would be appropriate. And I will say, I've also brought up about the phone myself personally. And I think that's part of the discussion, is that a delivery system? And I think we just don't know yet because we don't have proper usage defined in terms of that curriculum. So, that would be the things I know I've talked to both Mrs. Dedman and Mr. Barthel about that.
Okay. Mrs. McCulloch?
The question about one-to-one is a cart per classroom. So, that if teachers choose to use that, that everybody's using the same item and not phones and some on, on Chromebooks or the iPads. That was my point on, not that one-to-one per student, but that there's a cart per classroom. I'm not sure if you were answering something different. And I'm looking at the contract and it says the course of forty-eight months. Forty-eight months to me is four years. What do you mean it's not for four years? I'm confused. Yep. Page one of the contract of the Chromebooks. Contract term, forty-eight months. Thank you.
Hi, the iPad leases are for three years. The Chromebooks are four years. According to the research that was done, that is the expected maximum beneficial life cycle for those devices. So that's why they're three and four years.
But if they get a better, if a better one comes out two years into the Chromebook one, do they switch them out for us or we just have the same item for four years?
We would have those items for four years. That Chromebook, kind of like leasing a car. You have it for the term of that. But this one, these devices, as Ms. Detman pointed out, have the faster processors than the ones that we leased two years ago.
Sure. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I just have to make clear, I was answering the one-for-one. So if you call it one-for-one, the carts have nothing to do with one-for-one. It's the actual laptop themselves is what's considered the one-for-one. Now, the carts make it easier to haul around, to charge up. But just as an FYI, it doesn't do anything for software, their usability, I think. That's kind of the point that I was making is, and that's what proper usage would determine.
Go right ahead.
Oh, me? I think she's, no, he's talking to Sheik.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that with regard to the iPad agreement, we have the entire proposal and master lease agreement there. That's why there are some blank pages there because you have documents that are going to be used later in the process. With regard to the Chromebook packet, you do not have the master lease agreement that you have present for the iPad agreement. The master lease agreement, which will be coming for the Chromebook, Chromebooks later in the process probably will detail, as the iPad agreement does, that the district is solely responsible for insuring the equipment. So if it's broken, the district is responsible for insuring the deck, the equipment.
Okay. Ms. Rollins.
And that, I was just looking at the Apple agreement and I'll just chime in. And that is exactly what it says. So we are solely responsible for any damage to the equipment. So hopefully, I mean, either we factor that into the cost and that we're get, or we're getting insurance and factor that into the cost as well.
Okay. Mr. Segal.
Did we ask CDW if they offer essentially a damage protection plan and what that would cost per unit? And would that be cheaper than the insurance?
I can't speak directly to that, but we do have a process for screen repair, which is generally the most common damage that happens, especially with younger students. And those dollars then come right from the, the school budget to repair the screens. And so often, there's not only the cart, but also a protective case to keep the device safe. And if and when there's a repair that needs to be made, it goes through our tech department, but the dollars come from the schools.
Okay. All right, seeing no other lights on, I'm going to have a-
I'm putting mine on.
Okay, Ms. McCullough.
Only because Mr. Connor and I are trying to be on the same page. When I refer to one-to-one, and I just said this offline, so I just wanted to say it out. We don't buy one per student and they take it with them and have it all day long. That to me is a one-to-one Chromebook, for example, in the high school or the middle school or whatever. What we do is we have carts available per classroom. And my one-to-one was, is there one per classroom? Because then there's, there's issues with teachers saying, well, you know, I don't have the cart today and I have, you know, we need, we need them for this. So is have, that was my one-to-one. Is there one per classroom, not one per student that they take with them all day long?
It depends on the school at this point in time. There are some that have X number of carts per grade level and then the grade level teachers work together to, you know, share those resources. Other schools are closer to having one cart to one classroom. Where we are as an administrative team and are thinking on one-to-one is that we are not yet ready as a whole system to support twenty-eight thousand devices and the maintenance and repair that would have to happen. Ideally, you're training students to do that work as kind of a geek squad, as, you know, first line of repair in every school. That will take us some time to build. So as we're considering that, our goal is to have one cart to one classroom as curriculum rolls out. And again, that's part of, you know, as the ed tech coordinator comes on board, really connecting the curriculum with the instruction and the integration of technology so that when we buy these digital resources, teachers have plenty of devices available all the time in their classroom without having to schedule them among a group of teachers. So that's what we're looking at right now as we adopt more digital resources.
Okay. The coordinator then called the role on the approval of nine D and E, which are the iPad and Chromebook leases.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'm just going to throw a comment out here before I move on to the next one. We, we all made an agreement that we would get questions to the superintendent by noon on Monday before a board meeting. So I would just ask the board, if you do have questions that require some digging and resolution, then try to get those to Dr. Jared by noon on Monday before a board meeting. And then he can have the right people here to answer the right questions. Okay? Now we're on to item 10B, which is the RPS Managed Work Change Order Log. I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Comments and questions? Mr. Connor.
Yeah, I had asked this question in advance about the number of change orders. Is it typical, essentially? And the answer came back that yes. And that actually Cherry Valley was kind of the test case for a lot of the change orders and that for Constance Lane, the lessons learned there made it so that there weren't quite as many change orders for Constance Lane. Because I was wondering about the disparity and the fact that there was such a long list for the one versus the other. So that seemed to make sense to me as why there were so many change orders, particularly for Cherry Valley. So the good news from my standpoint is we learned from that implementation, we applied it so that they weren't change orders, that they were part of the actual building. And I hopefully did a better job explaining that one than the earlier ones.
Any other comments or questions? Now I have the coordinator call the role on the approval of 10B, the RPS Managed Work Change Order Log.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll now move on to the closed session consent items, including the HR organizational report and addendum. And the student discipline cases, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4227 is expelled through the first semester of this school year. Student 4228 is expelled through the remainder of this school year. Students 4230 and 4231 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the entire 2019, 20 school year. The following students are receiving EIA's. They are students 1031, 3675, 3681, 3682, 3683, 3684, student 3685, 3686, 3687, 3689, 3690, 3691, 3692, 3693, 3694, and student 3695. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Escobedo? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We'll move on to our next item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jared.
Yes, a couple of brief items to discuss. For one, I wanted to thank Mr. Scavano and Mrs. McCullough, who are going to be coming in tomorrow to start our charter school renewal process. They're going to be among a group of people that are going to be here to start the process to review our district's internal capacity before we go outside. And we'll be looking at our process and protocols and procedures there. I also wanted to draw attention to, I'm really enjoying my school site visit process. I am on my ninth site visit and I've added classroom visits along with one-on-one time with the principal to go with the faculty meeting. That's been a really enjoyable addition to the process and the protocol. I'm really enjoying being in classrooms more frequently and also enjoying hearing the principal perspective in addition to the faculty perspective. And we've slightly changed the questions during the interview process when I talk with the faculty. We have a town hall-style meeting and we've been having really interesting conversations around the net promoter score concept, which has led to some really good insights and some really interesting comments from faculty about what it would take for them to feel better about promoting their school or reasons why they already promote their school very heavily. And we've had some great conversations there, along with our typical conversations about challenges as well as recognition opportunities. So again, about a quarter of the way there. So we're, not only are we looking at our charter renewal process, but we're also well into our, my personal protocol to get out and see where things are, see what's happening in our schools. And I'm having a great, a great time, as always, getting a chance to work with our faculty and see our students firsthand. And finally, I wanted to give a shout out to Rockford Reads. They were recognized today. It's another community group tied in with Rotary. Bob Pressman, who was instrumental in leading that program from its inception, has stepped away. And there's a, a group of people that are stepping up and are doing great things in our buildings as well. So appreciative to, to Bob, but also to the Rotarians and the volunteers for all across Rockford that are, that are taking the time to read the children in our district. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to action items. The first one is the Extended Day Program for Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Model that Dr. Wolf presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, a quick question. Just dawn on me, but the, with different providers, if you may, the consistency of the program, has that been planned out to make sure we get consistent delivery throughout the different schools? Or is that?
I want to make sure that I understand the question. This before you tonight is a very small add-on program at RISA. We're testing out the concept of portable maker space to do STEM-related training. NIU has been a partner in that work at NIU, sorry, at RISA. And we're looking to put that into a contract to fund product and people this year. In terms of overall Twenty-First Century programming, we meet federal and state guidelines for the RFPs, request for proposal by the funding agents. And each of our partners have to meet those quality standards.
Okay, yeah, I think that rings, rings a bell, but okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Now I have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of action item 15A, the Extended Day Programming.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr.? Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our second item tonight is the Board Policy 6.300 Instruction Graduation Requirement Changes. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 15B, the revisions to Board Policy 6.300.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We are now on to new business and Mrs. French is going to present the next item, which is High School Master Scheduling Proposal. Somebody needs to make sure that somebody follows up with her. Give that to Jennifer or Erin or whoever.
Good evening. My name's Bridgette French. I'm the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. I'm here to present a proposal for, to improve our high school master schedule. So as you all know, in 2012, we implemented high school academies going wall-to-wall in 2014. Now, all five of our high schools operate smaller learning communities within them. However, one of the biggest barriers to operating our academies with fidelity is our master schedule. Currently, our master schedule reflects a traditional high school schedule, not a school district that operates academies. Additionally, three out of the four of our master schedulers in our comprehensive high schools are new to the district or new to their master scheduler role. We put structures in place to support academies, but we do not schedule currently for an academy model. Currently, we schedule our core courses first, English, Math, Social Sciences, and Science, followed by our Singleton Electives, followed by our Pathway Courses, with our Special Ed and Bilingual Courses scheduled last. What happens then, for example, is if a student is, chooses a Pathway Course, but they've already been placed into English, oftentimes they're moved into another unrelated course. Additionally, our Special Ed and Bilingual Students are placed into whatever academy or pathway is available. The problem is lack of pathway fidelity. Our courses are not sequential. For example, a human and public services student may take sociology in 10th grade, intro to, to technical theater in 11th grade, and intro to criminal justice in 12th grade. While all these courses are in the HPS Academy, the student is taking non-stackable courses, which means they haven't had the prerequisites in place to take dual credit or earn an industry certification. Without sequenced classes, students are not always placed into relevant courses. When a sequence is done properly in our master schedule, students in relevant, students are placed into relevant courses. And when coursework is relevant, students are interested. And when students are interested, student achievement increases. Additionally, our dual credit enrollment is extremely low. Without stackable courses, students don't always get into the dual credit courses because they haven't had the prerequisites in place. Statewide dual credit numbers are low. From 2016 to 2018, the state has held study at 12% of students attaining dual credit courses. This is why this has become a statewide initiative through the Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness Act. However, RPS is currently at less than 1%. Why dual credit versus AP? Well, when a student takes a dual credit course, they take the class, they pass the class, and they get the credit. There's no test and there's no cost to the student. Additionally, according to Jobs for the Future, dual credit courses are a proven way for low-income and minority students to get a jump on a college degree. Historically, our industry certifications have not been strategically aligned to students' coursework. Students who take fitness and wellness, for example, may have the opportunity to get a CPR certification, but not a personal trainer certification. While CPR is great, why can't we do both for our students? With sequential stackable courses, we can because the prerequisites will be in place for students to receive both certifications. Currently, we're only tracking industry certifications if it's part of a CIANCI grant plan. And CIANCI is the pass-through agency that provides Perkins funding for our career and technical education programs. We also lack academy purity. Purity is the number of students who are in their core courses and their Pathway Courses- courses with their peers in the same academy. These are our path, our current purity numbers, actually from, from our last school year, I apologize. Why is purity important? If classes are pure, instruction can be different. If instruction is different, student achievement increases. Additionally, with academy purity, we're closer, one step closer to model status for our high schools. In June of 2018, the state launched college and career readiness indicators. These college and career readiness indicators will become 6.25% of the quality indicators in which the school district will be evaluated based on the Illinois Accountability System within ESSA. The CCRIs measure three things: academic indicators, which is SAT, GPA; career-ready indicators are students getting those work-based learning experiences; and a career area of interest, that's their pathway sequence. In 2020, 21, they'll be looking for our data to support those numbers. We've met with ed services, high school principals, and master schedulers, and agreed to flip the way that we do our master schedule. This provides equity for our special ed and bilingual students. This allows our pathway courses to be scheduled with priority, and this works because there are naturally more sections available of English, math, social science, and science. We've worked with school teams to pare down our pathways from 23 to 14. We created a rubric that we use to measure all pathways. We ask, does it end in an industry credential or early college credit? Does it meet workforce demand, and are our students interested in it? We explored alternate choices. In 2015, we hired the College and Career Academy Support Network to come in and train our master schedulers, and while the training was good overall, they weren't familiar with our systems. So it gave a broad overview, but not the day-to-day scheduling resources that our master schedulers need. For next-generation learning in Nashville, Metro Nashville Public Schools, they operate their schedules in a block schedule, so it's, it's apples to oranges. K-12 Insight offers, they do not offer academy-specific master schedule training, they offer general master schedule training for non-academy schools. And last year, we hired e-school, Power School, to come in and do some training with our master schedulers, and on that last day of training, our master schedulers asked if they could just have time with one of our most experienced master schedulers and someone from our ITIS department, because they found that the most valuable training time they had was with our internal teams. We have included purity metrics on our high school scorecard. We'll be looking at a purity rate of 90% for freshmen, 80% for sophomores, 70% for juniors, and 50% for seniors. This falls under the quality instruction indicators on the high school scorecard and is worth eight points, two points for each year. This year, we would like to provide a differential to an existing 12-month assistant principal candidate to provide 10 days of training for our current master schedulers to allow them to schedule with the new flipped schedule. We're also working with our continuous improvement team and their strategic process auditors to help us clean up data, make sure our printed high school planning guide aligns to our online course guide, and clean up some of the way our academies and pathways are coded in our, in our system. If we find by next year that this has been beneficial and we are moving towards academy purity, we would propose, we would come back to the board and propose that we hire a full-time position to support our master schedulers. This would be a 12-month administrative position that would audit high school courses, schedules, support registration, manage the high school planning guide, provide processes and support to monitor purity. Our current master schedulers are assistant principals, their deans of curriculum, and their academy principals of one or more academies. They don't have the current capacity to do all of these things. Going forward, we would like to include incentives for schools who hit their purity metrics. We will work with the continuous improvement department to audit the schedules, and if the schools hit their purity metrics in FY '20, in FY '21, they would receive funding equivalent to one FTE for meeting those purity rates. We've not currently provided our high schools the time and resources to hit these targets, nor have we provided the accountability for reaching that target. This incentive will also ensure that our liberal arts courses are not adversely impacted by the way we schedule academies. The total cost for FY '19 is about $20,000. Mr. Zetecor and I still have to, to determine the final differential for the candidate, and then additionally, sub-administrators for buildings, which is something in the conversations that we had with our high school principals. We don't want this, the training of our master schedulers to adversely impact their day-to-day work, so we will be providing sub-administrators for their buildings while their master schedulers are out during training. Again, if all goes well, with this differential for FY '19, we'd be looking to implement a director of master scheduling with the director's salary range between 85 and 110. This, we have agreed, in ed services, we have unanimous support of bilingual, special ed curriculum, and college and career readiness to co-fund this position. And then additionally, we would be looking at principal incentives in FY '21 for those who hit their purity metrics. We'll assess the situation initially by looking at the purity metrics on the high school scorecard, again, aligning with quality instruction. Our leading indicators are students who attain dual credit and those who receive industry certifications, and then of course, our lagging indicators are, are students' SAT scores and graduation rates. If we schedule our classes with fidelity to the academy model, our students will obtain dual credit and industry certification, and the closer we get to model status for our academies shows that we are doing what's best for our students in this model, and those school districts that have operated their, their school academies with fidelity have seen graduation rates increase dramatically. But until we fix the master schedule, we will not be able to move the needle dramatically on our academy fidelity. We will report back with preliminary numbers in the fall of 2019 for dual credit and industry certification with a goal of achieving model status in at least one academy at every high school by 2020. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Bridgette? Mr. Connor?
So this is one where I sent a number of questions, and I'll just, most of these are fairly straightforward, and thank you, Mrs. French sent me a multiple-page answer for this, so I won't read it all, but one of my questions was, while the administration is only asking for 20K for the scheduled training now, is there a dependency for next year's implied request for the new administrative position? And actually, what I should have added was the incentive for the principals, and the sense, the answer was yes, that we're not exactly committing to next year, but it very much sounded like if we commit to this approach, that, and I'm paraphrasing, you didn't put it this way, but it'd be foolish not to do the next step for 2020.
If it works this year, and we're
Assuming it works, yep.
Yes, and we're, we're confident that it will, but yes, that is correct.
And there, there was an impact that is outlined in the write-up, talking about, if you will, the fidelity to the three core sequences and going year by year, so, so that was one question. And I basically did the second part of that was, how much is the administration requiring that position to meet the program goals? And I think there was a lot of discussion around fidelity and meeting the goals of, for example, the certifications, those kinds of things.
Correct.
And it sounds like not having that position puts that at risk, is
That's correct.
Kind of the summary. That's the one where you commented and said that people are assistant principals or curriculum dean or whatever, and that this is complicated enough where we need a full-time person is essentially the argument, yeah.
Our, our master schedulers are also serving as our 12-month assistant principals, curriculum deans of their schools, and a principal of one of our academies within the school.
Yeah.
And this master schedule in and of itself is, is complicated, and however, it's definitely doable if we have a person that is devoted to ensuring that it's done correctly.
And if I might say so, part of what I got from the reading on this was that the standardization, it's one thing to say it, but you can't, you can't proactively say every step that you have to have a real person who will go in and review this. That's why you have the audits, that's why you have this
Correct.
Essentially director position to go in and make sure that there is standardization and have that review process in place, and somebody with time and focus is kind of the
That's correct. The, the master schedule is much like a, a stack of cards or a domino effect. If you move one thing, everything in it shifts.
Right.
So you really have to have someone that understands that very deeply, and in addition to that, our counselors and our clerical office professionals do a lot of entering of, of courses and changing of courses, and it will be critical to have a resource available to them throughout the year that will be able to answer any questions they have, come to the school to, to train them if necessary.
Then the next question, I said, I, I said that the metric name of purity sounded kind of odd to my ear, but the answer I got back was basically, this is a standard academy term, and so as odd as it sounds
It is an industry term.
It is an industry term, so I said, okay, you know, it just sounded weird. And I did ask about the other metrics, and I think you've, you've addressed a lot of this, that we won't just have one kind of metric, meaning, did we literally hit the schedule, there's all the results out of it, did we get more certifications, you know, did it affect graduation rates and so forth? So it sounds like this will have an impact on the school dashboard, would be my guess, right?
Yes, yes, and, and the state metrics as well, correct, yes.
Yeah, so that, we're going after that. And, and I actually asked about the certification tracking, and it said that we don't have the mechanism to track that today, but I'm assuming, because what you mentioned in your answer is that there's a, working with the IT department to put something in e-school so that you can pull reports into decision ed
Correct.
Around those very metrics, right, that's
We're working with the ITIS department on industry credentials, dual credits already in place, and then additionally, our work-based learning experiences and our three core sequences. We're working with them on being able to track all of these things within
And again, this, so we have a common theme here. This will go back to the school-based dashboards
Correct.
So that we know what the differences are and who's essentially following. And then the last is, I said, it appears that there's a logistical focus, e.g. sequencing and so forth, and an academic focus, which are the incentives and the tracking, and again, the answer is yes, that there's really two types of activities which would support having somebody full-time who's really going to be after this, because one of the things you find on industry is, what we've said many times, if it gets measured, it gets focused, and then
Correct.
You have somebody whose job it is to actually ensure that that focus is there, so
Correct. Yes, yes, the logistical and the academic are tied together, because if we do the master schedule right, then, for example, instead of just having all of your engineering, manufacturing students in their engineering and manufacturing courses together, they're also together in their English class and in their math class, and then what the teachers can do is really tailor that curriculum to their interests, which we have not really been able to do. We have done in pockets, but we haven't truly been able to do that because we haven't had that purity level in place. Sure?
Ms. McCullough?
I, I think you keep using the word purity without explaining what it is. I mean, I've read it in the, the report here, but 90% of ninth graders in courses with other ninth graders, and then for 10th, 11th, and 12th, 80, 70, 50, are with students in the same academy, and that's because students are not in academies until they're sophomores.
Correct.
So, yeah, just having it on your PD essay without having an explanation of what it was, was just, wanted to take an opportunity for anybody who's listening.
Sure, thank you.
On page 19, where you're talking about assessments, there's no reference to AP. I know that we like to see AP. AP is, even though it's not sequential, there are precourses that get you prepared to go up to the left, next level, but that is just not anything you're looking at as part of your assessment is
We are looking at industry certifications are early college credit, and early college credit includes AP dual credit or that transitional math, which is a, a step up into community college. So those, all three of those classes would be considered early college credit. But when we, when we measure them in our system, we will be looking at them individually as far as
But you're just looking at students attaining dual credit, and so you're just using dual credit as a term for any college credit, whether it's taken as a course that has dual credit or an AP or
We are looking at increasing the number of students who have access to dual credit courses. That is, the state of Illinois is looking at industry certifications, excuse me, or early college credit. An early college credit would be considered AP dual credit or a transitional course.
I'm not understanding principal incentives. So is that money going directly to the principal?
No, what, what we're doing is, when you take away, one of the challenges with scheduling fidelity is you could potentially lose some treasured singleton electives that are not pathway electives, and so I thought, Mrs. French did a great job of devising a different solution, which is if you hit your targets with purity, the principal is then rewarded with being able to add five sections back that were kind of the toughest cuts
Oh, you told me that, yeah, okay. To hit targets, approximately 80,000. I, again, it wasn't real clear based on this, but when, when you explained this initially, you're right.
It was really desire to balance. We don't want to pit, exploratory electives are incredibly important to a schedule as well, and so core courses are never going to be in jeopardy, but this was a way to compromise, and we'll strike the right balance. If the incentive needs to be raised or lowered, I mean, we can look at that from year to year, but we thought five sections seemed like a reasonable number, and chatting with some principals in terms of, gosh, if you could just bring back those, man, I, I hated to lose the yearbook section, I hated to have to double up Spanish IV and AP Spanish, and, well, those are all courses that you could then bring back once you hit your target. And candidly, a lot of times hitting that target does require making some really tough, tough calls, so this allows the principal to have that discretion to hit our target and not do it at the expense of non-pathway electives. We thought it was a nice way for a win-win, for a relatively modest investment.
I hope that's successful, because as a parent who had students, I mean, when students enter our district, if we really want to draw on students, make us our first choice, one of the things we say is, we're going to offer this pathway, we're going to offer these classes, we're going to offer, for example, Calc II typically, but by the time you get up there, you've lost so many of the course students who no longer have time or whatever, and, and yet, it was sort of a promise entered and into when they started taking their algebra very early on. So I'm glad for that. I, I just want to say from, we've just had a lot of, we'll, we'll have more conversation about calendars than the like coming up, but one of the things that we've heard from teachers is, what's the difference? Because we have to wait, all the, all the student schedules get revamped after the second week of school, especially in the high schools. I mean, this is an incredibly difficult job, if any of you are even mildly aware of what it's like to be a master scheduler. But if we could get this right so that we're not moving a lot of, I'm hoping that this kind of a, a secondary
Yes.
Benefit will be that students will get in a class, they'll start a class, they'll be in that class, and they'll continue on, and they won't be in one class for two weeks, and then we move them after and then we move them after we get the fall housing report or whatever, and find out who's dropped, and oh, there's these classes. So I think that would be a real benefit as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes. I love the pathway, especially the certification part of it. I think it gives us, it gives our students the, it gives us a competitive edge if it's used correctly, if they go through the process correct. So I'm grateful for that. But my concern is the scheduling sequence. So we changed the way that we have ordered, we kind of flipped it. The concern is that we're going to have students that's going to, their senior year, they're going to need like two math classes, they're going to need, for their core, for their core courses, they're going to need two science, because they somehow fell through the cracks of the first three years. And so how, how are we going to effectively make sure that that doesn't happen? Best scenario, what can we, how can we handle that?
I can, I think I can address that as someone who's made more than my share of master schedules in my life, in my previous life as a high school principal. And just as a general practice, this is about making sure the skeleton of the schedule is built in that order. When you talk about the type of student situations you're describing, it's very much about hand scheduling at that point. So what a great master scheduler will do is design a great schedule that works for as many students as possible, and the order of operations is really important, and making sure you get those tough-to-schedule courses laid out first, and then giving the options where you have two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, sometimes ten sections, you do that last. But when it comes down to that individual student, what will happen is, the individual counselor will work with the scheduler in the building to make the necessary tweaks in that child's schedule to make sure it works. So there's two different types of scheduling. There's the building, the skeleton of the schedule that works best for all kids, but there's always a percentage of students that will need to be hand-scheduled that have unique needs. That will not change no matter what we do here. There will always be the need to make those tweaks when someone needs two math classes or three science classes or whatever, unique circumstances come up. We'll still meet those children's needs, those students' needs through the master scheduling process, through their counselor.
So that'd be more, you said, one-on-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, so in the opportunity calls, you talk about not achieving model status. And can you elaborate a little more, someone elaborate a little more on model status and how that, what direct correlation you have to academic achievement? Because I see you've got there, that other schools who've implemented academies with fidelity have seen significant growth in student achievement, but what does that mean? I don't know what that...
So the most famous point of reference is Nashville, of course, and they started around fifty percent, and they're now somewhere in the upper eighties in their, their wall-to-wall academies.
Sorry, fifty percent of...
Fifty percent was their graduation rate before they implemented academies, and now they're in the upper eighties. And it has taken some time, it's been over ten, ten years, I believe, maybe closer to twelve. The correlation is, without changing the way that we schedule, we really are just running a career and technical education program. We're running really good electives. But academies are about a lot more than that. Of course, we have the community support in place, but that teaching and learning piece is critical to the success of academies. And without the master schedule being flipped, so to speak, we can't really focus the coursework to be extremely relevant for our students. So some of the examples we've seen is literature circles in an English class where students are reading different types of novels about health for students that are in the health sciences. There are a lot of examples. But until we schedule, teachers largely who are teaching English, math, social studies, and science have students from all different academies, so they're not really able to tailor their coursework to be relevant, most relevant for students. Our, our teachers are doing a fabulous job, but until we allow our schedules to support academies, they do not have the ability to provide that coursework. And that's really the missing piece that, that we're facing. And until we get that figured out, we won't achieve model status.
Okay, so you talked about graduation rates, but I guess what I'm after is academic achievement. What, you know, by implementing with fidelity and getting model status, how can we correlate that to academic achievement?
So I'll chime in for a minute. So at the same time that we are working on the, the structure, so kind of that first level of change, the structure is the master schedule. Your master schedule is your instructional plan in hours and minutes. At the same time that we're doing that, we're in the middle of our curriculum redesign. We're ready to roll up to next year's sophomore classes, which is where things become more academy-specific. So while we're working on kind of that third level of standards with the curriculum design, we're also changing the structure in response. And so those two are really working together to make sure that as we clarify, you know, those essential learning outcomes that we always talk about, and we're clarifying what students should know and be able to do, we're also pairing it with the structure that helps teachers best provide that real-world experience. And we expect that as we clarify learning outcomes and we provide more relevant and engaging instruction through the academy model, that logically more growth and more achievement will follow. It's really difficult, though, to ask teachers to make that shift when the structure of their day doesn't support it. And it's difficult to have students really buy in as a member of a small learning group, a small learning community, when only a portion of their schedule in the day is spent with those teachers and those students. It's also very difficult for counselors to really intimately know all of the students on their caseload when they're only in a smattering of the classes that they impact and that they counsel. So it's really a structural support for that small learning community, which really is kind of the, the hub of an academy. And with all of those pieces together, not one piece individually, we then expect to see both graduation rate increases and student achievement increases.
Do we have a, just out of curiosity, from other academies that have been successful and achieved model status, do they have, have you guys looked at what the, you know, again, direct correlation of academic achievement over years, once they've implemented academies with fidelity and received model status? And once they've received the model status, have you seen their academic achievement?
Sure, yeah, we definitely have seen that. But there's no one thing that increases student achievement. If we look at achieving model status, there are ten national standards of practice, and you have to meet or exceed all ten of those in order to, to achieve model status. So while certainly we can say there are school districts that have seen significant increases in student achievement and graduation rates as a result of deploying academies, there's not one thing that they did within those academies that we could say X was the correlation to Y. It's a, it's a combination of all the things together.
And to re, just to reinforce that, I mean, that's part of our work with the Great Lakes College and Career Pathways partnership through the Joyce Foundation, which we're in year three or four?
Three.
Three. Year three of, is that we're learning all those best practices from four kind of sister communities, and everyone is doing some things slightly different. I mean, it's working for a particular group of students in a particular way. And so we're able to kind of learn lessons from what's working in those four communities to apply what works here.
Sure.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, did you, I think I heard you say that the academy, the purity numbers would, there'd be a specific number associated with that on the school report card, is that...
So the, the ninety, eighty, seventy, fifty will all be on the school scorecard, so ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, each year is worth two points on the school scorecard.
So that's eight points?
Eight points total, correct.
What's our, how many points are we allocating on the school report card for graduation rate?
I don't know that.
She's looking it up.
So graduation rate has ten points for the overall graduation rate for a school, and then an additional eight by subgroup.
I just, I mean, this is a good time, given this conversation, for me to share an observation that I've been thinking about sharing. So I was on the board that voted for academies, and some of us went down to Nashville before that vote was taken to see how they were implementing academies. And Mrs. McCullough is the only other person on the board, I think it was on that trip. And one of the things that I remember from that trip, what I saw is that Nashville actually did implement small learning communities with a career overlay. And the thing that I remember vividly, we all went to watch a model, it was a mock meeting of the team, teachers, and counselor. And they, Nashville had created a data dashboard, and they used that data dashboard to automatically flag kids who were at risk. And so once a week, the teachers and the counselor assigned to each small learning community would sit at a table, and they'd talk about every kid who got flagged by their data dashboard. And then after we left that meeting, they took us into, every academy had a war room. And this was a real war room, massive FERPA violation, by the way, because the walls were covered by a chart showing every kid in that academy, where they were at, using their data dashboard. And I can, I can remember being really excited about that, we were all really excited about that, and getting back on the bus after that meeting and saying, this is what we should be doing in our district. And I'm not aware that we're doing that. So when we talk about increases in graduation rate, I'm not convinced that it's the career academies that increased Nashville's graduation rate. I think it was their robust use of data, I think it was the way that they implemented small learning communities. That's my own, that's my observation, that's my thought. I think we're starting to make steps in that direction. I like the steps that we're making in that direction. I wish we had taken some of those steps earlier. But I don't think you can look at Nashville and say, oh, look, they did career academies and their graduation rate increased, and, and draw a correlation, a causation correlation between the two. Nashville's doing a lot of things that we're not doing. And I, and I think that there are other lessons that we might be able to learn from Nashville and, and other districts, and I hope we start learning some of those lessons.
With the addition of Jen Masick, the Director of MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support to our, our team here at the district, she has provided some tools and resources for those smaller learning community teams in our high schools to have those conversations. So those are happening this year, and I'm, I'm really excited to see, and I have been in some of those meetings where I've heard them talk about the interventions that are in place, or they're talking about putting in place for, for particular students who they've identified as a part of their, of their academy. So it, so it is happening. I agree with you, it's, again, it's not, it's not just one thing. But I do think that the academy's model allows teachers to have that smaller learning community time to talk about those things.
I would just add, what I think works well with this particular scheduling model, Mr. Rollins, and will help, I think you really nailed one of the key elements of why high school redesign structurally is so important. And what I think the fidelity of the master schedule will allow us to do is create a core group of teachers that truly works with the same group of students. Part of our problem has been that as we've implemented academies, one of our shortcomings has been students flop, kind of move, being in an academy in name, but the master schedule, you know, maybe their English and their math classes with their academy group, but the schedule didn't work right, so science and social studies was outside. And that really decreased the ability for a core group of teachers in a smaller learning community who all teach the same student to implement that. So I, I think you really nailed the key element of the, of what we are aspiring to in terms of really facilitating those high-quality conversations for all students, and making sure they are properly scheduled together is a huge part of that. I think we're going to need to continue to look for similar solutions for middle school with the middle school teaming model as well.
My question was, you know, what's the timeframe for a high school to get to their target? Because I don't, I don't believe it's going to happen overnight, that, you know, we're going to roll out master schedule training next year and everything's going to be perfect or whatever, so.
Sure, so...
Do you have a timeframe that you're hoping to be?
So this year, we want to start the training as soon as possible, obviously pending board approval. We have a candidate in mind who's an experienced internal master scheduler at one of our high schools, who is interested in providing the training. And she would immediately start working with our master schedulers, taking them step-by-step through this, over ten days of training, and then additional hours if needed. So we would be looking immediately to see the impact.
Okay.
That this would make.
Any other questions for Bridgette? Okay, this will come to the board for a vote on December eleventh, that board meeting. So thank you for a good presentation. Any other business agenda items for tonight? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. Move by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we are adjourned at eight-thirty-one.